Good afternoon, we're convening the Senate Committee on Transportation and Culture and Arts, here in Conference Room 224, State Capitol, on our 3pm agenda. We do have a number of measures up for hearing this afternoon, so we'd ask everyone to make sure you have your written testimony filed, so that's public and accessible to everybody. And if you have submitted written testimony and you're here to testify in person or on Zoom, we'd ask you to try and keep your testimony concise, as we do have what you've written, so we can make sure we can get to everybody's testimony in time. And that said, we do have a two-minute time limit for testimony, and there will be an opportunity to have the committee ask questions thereafter, in case you run out of time. So that said, let's move into our hearing. Up first today is Senate Bill 1411 relating to the Drug and Alcohol Toxicology Testing Laboratory, which makes an appropriation to the Department of Transportation as a grant needed to the City and County of Honolulu to expend funds from the Drug and Alcohol Toxicology Testing Labs Special Fund and amends references to the State Drug and Alcohol Toxicology Testing Labs Special Fund. And testifying first on SB 1411 is the Department of Health. In... Is this online? No. In support, Department of Transportation. Thank you very much. Up next is County of Hawaii Police Department.
Aloha Chair Lee and committee members. My name's Tori Keldner. I'm the program manager of... Sorry about that. I'm the program manager of traffic services here at the Hawaii Police Department. And I'm here today representing the department to support the passing of Senate Bill 1411. And we stand by the written testimony we have, and I wanted to stress to you some of the events that led us to where we're at in this. Over the past three years, we've had a great concern for the department in managing the testing of blood samples collected during impaired driving cases. In 2020, clinical labs informed our department and other departments that they would no longer conduct tests on blood samples for alcohol concentrations. And this left our department without a means to conduct testing, since state law requires that the testing be conducted in a certified lab but inside the state of Hawaii. Fortunately, a City and County of Honolulu Emergency Services Lab came forward and agreed to perform the testing temporarily, as we tried to find a solution. It only took a few months and it became apparent that the City and County of Honolulu Lab had become overwhelmed and the amount of work that was being submitted and with the amount of work that had been submitted, and they determined that they would too no longer perform the test for us. At that point, the Hawaii Department of Transportation agreed to temporarily fund a position dedicated to testing the blood samples at the city and county lab, and they began the testing again. We're extremely appreciative for the help offered by DOT and the City of County Lab. However, temporary fixes to a legally required testing process have continued to be a great concern for the Hawaii Police Department. Senate Bill 1411 will assure a long-term remedy for the testing. It's for those reasons we urge you, the committee, to approve this legislation. Thank you for allowing the Hawaii Police Department to provide comments, and I greatly appreciate it if you pass Senate Bill 1411. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next on 1411 is... Mothers Against Drug Driving?
Thank you. Mothers Against Drug Driving in Hawaii. Sprott Stand is responsible for...
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? Oh, please, come forward.
My name is Richard Saiki. I represent the Hawaii Department of Health.
Oh, apologies.
I fully support this measure.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to note though that the department respectfully asked that it be removed as the...
You're on 14-11, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. Expediting agency in this bill. Okay, because we'll no longer be involved in drug and alcohol toxicological testing.
So no need. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you everybody. Let's move on to the next measure. Hold on, Zoom. I agree with Department of Health on Zoom as well.
Yes, hi. I'm Ed Desmond, and Richard Saiki has spoken for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else on 1411, let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 1401 relating to the Electric Bicycle and Electric Moped Refit Program. Up first on 1401 is Department of Transportation.
Chair, do you think that is important?
Thank you. Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Hawaii State Energy Office.
I stand on Hawaii State Energy Office. I stand in our written testimony in support of your request.
Ah, thank you. And we'd like to share Hawaii. Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Aloha Council... Yes, committee members, sorry. Wrong hat on.
Sorry. He didn't call us House members, so it's okay.
Give me time.
Someone goes to former county.
I know. That's where my mind went, so apologies again. I stand in support of this with an additional request that for... Consider other options such as bike share for folks that don't have access to a secure and safe place to park a bike once they buy it. Again, we support this, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 929 relating to DOT, which requires DOT to implement recommendations by the Office of the Auditor. And testifying first is Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Do you stand on our comments?
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have in this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 1087 relating to transportation, which renames the State Highway Safety Council and amends its duties and composition. Testifying first is Climate Change Adaptation Commission in support. Ulu Pono Initiative.
Good afternoon Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noi, members of the committee, Mike and Munich Kott on behalf of the Ulu Pono Initiative. We want to stand on our written testimony in support. Just with a brief comment, you know, this group can provide thoughtful evidence-based conversations to really support the department as it looks to balance a lot of the community needs across Hawaii. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Next we have Bike Share Hawaii in support.
I stand on...
Thank you. Also have testimony from two individuals... Oh, excuse me, actually CJ Johnson, I believe, online. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Chair and committee. I stand on my testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally from Will Karen in support. That's all the testimony we have in this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? If not, all right, are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 1086 relating to transportation, which similarly amends the composition and duties of the State Highway Safety Council. Testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Chair, I'll stand on my comments.
Thank you. This is Ulu Pono Initiative.
Chair, I stand on our request for an answer.
Thank you. And... That's all the submitted testimony we have. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 1410 relating to truck beds, which repeals exemptions from the prohibition on operating pickup truck with passengers seated in the bed under certain circumstances. Testifying first on 1410 is Department of Transportation.
Chair, do you think that is important?
Thank you. And it's all the testimony we have in this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on 1410? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 1506 relating to transportation, which establishes a Safe Routes for People program and funding. Testifying first on 1506 is the Department of Transportation.
Chair, Department of Transportation is in support.
Thank you. Next is Department of Health. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair and Chair. I'm Lola Irvin, representing Director Fink for the Department of Health, and Department of Health does defer to the Department of Transportation on the physical implications and of course as the lead agency. We do want to note that while we offer comments that the intent of this measure and the intent of this task force that would be formed is and is consistent with what the Centers for Disease Control represents as one of the eight key strategies to promote physical activity. And I'm sorry, I realize I'm masking my voice, okay? And also that in terms of the Department of Health's Healthy Hawaii Strategic Plan 2030, it does meet the objectives there. And then the Department of Education, Department of Health work on the wellness guidelines, and it is consistent with the guidelines as well to improve the physical activity opportunities by changing the environment for our youth as well as our families. So thank you for the opportunity to give my testimony.
Thank you. Up next is the State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
Please stand on our platform in support.
Thank you. Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support. Honolulu Police Department.
HBD stands on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Councilmember... Oh, I apologize, taking sideboard. Councilmember Rainy Cordero in support. Ulu Pono Initiative. Good afternoon.
Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. Thank you Chair for hearing this measure. Just real brief comments, we are in strong support of this bill. We believe additional resources from the state can help us to meet some of our collective goals, especially around improving congestion, climate goals, and around the cost of living. So we really appreciate this committee taking up this measure and considering active transportation's future. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Up next is Association of Native Hawaiian Positions in support. Huiyo O'ho'nu'a in support. Kawai Path in support. Get Fit Kawai in support. Hawaii Bicycling League in support. Bike Share Hawaii.
We respectfully stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. AARP Hawaii. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Wow, you're so fast, I thought you'd be a skip on the agenda.
All right, fishing.
I'm Audrey Suganakagawa. I'm the obvious director for AARP Hawaii, and for obvious reason, AARP stands in strong support of this. We know that our kapuna are probably the most at risk for pedestrian injuries and mortality, and so we always support initiatives that will provide safe routes, safe roads for not only for our kapuna, but for our kiki and all the pedestrians. So thank you very much for this opportunity to support this measure, and thank you for all that you do to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Up next is Hawaii Children's Action Network in support. Artenberger Attorney in support. Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support. Jessica Thompson. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you so much Honorable Chair and Vice Chair. I stand on my written testimony, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Cameron Rogers in support. CJ Johnson.
Chair and Council, I stand in support of my strong stance on my strong support. I did want to just call out, since this concerns highway safety special funds, that I made a suggested amendment to the current State Routes to School Special Fund, HRS 291C3, that just because it's an older statute, it has some legacy language in it, and I recommended some language changes that remove some references to Safety Lou, which is outdated funding, clarify some of the responsibilities of the Safe Routes Coordinator, and clarify the administration of head permitted uses of the existing special fund. Other than that, just standing in strong support. Thank you so much for listening, appreciate it.
Thank you. We have additional support from about another 10 or so individuals who've submitted written testimony. Is there anyone else here with us in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Well, Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. Ed, regarding... Regarding, let's see, we're looking at Section 5, Part 2, regarding the use of the highway funds for protected walkways and bikeways. Can I bring up an addition if possible, that the group would look at infrastructure such as, and it brings to mind in one of my recent former district, like Waimea, and part of the district on the Hamakua Coast, where, and I would say to add infrastructure such as a bus stop or a building to house the students, particularly in Waimea when it rains in the morning and you see the kids all walking down to school. And, you know, at the bus stop, or they're waiting for the bus stop, there's no shelter. And I was just wondering if you can work with the group and find out through the counties what their programs are, where the infrastructure is lacking in certain areas.
Would love to. And so to answer your question, the federal funds are not restricted, so it could be used for those purposes. But you bring up a good point. I mean, once we open this up like this, because we've been working with the counties in different areas, and sure that we worked on their system as well. Once we open this up, there is no end to it.
Absolutely, I can imagine.
Yeah, and that's why in my testimony I had recommended, because right now, policies are not the restriction right now. It's funding. So if there was an infusion of funding that was dedicated, especially state funding that was dedicated specifically to bike and ped, and I threw in a number that is not just a swag, it was a number that I know I can justify. If we put in $50 million to make sure we could move forward on improvements in different communities, we could affect a significant number of communities with speed management devices, more safety devices in different areas that are already built out, plus we could add in more bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And Chair Lee and I were talking about them as a potential for something like this.
Yeah, and in that area on Mud Lane going down to the schools from Mud Lane, the kids there in Waimea, they walk and they bike. But there's periods of time when the weather is real bad, but that the county is good about their county system, transportation, but then they can stop and pick up, you know, those in certain areas. But that entire region, I don't see, aside from, I think, the coverage at the entrance, at Mud Lane and Lakeland. But beyond that and going into town, I don't see the infrastructure there for it to protect anyone. The kapuna was walking, you know, going down to whatever they need to, wherever they go.
Yeah, and sadly not unlike many of the communities that we have.
Yep.
Projects are built out and they stop in different areas. So you have gaps in the system, like you just pointed out.
Appreciate it. Thank you Chair. Thank you Ed.
Thank you Chair. Two questions for you, Director Sniffen. In the current, you said 50 million? So is that what you're proposing for Safe Routes to School this coming session?
So not necessarily Safe Routes to School, but for this bill itself, if we have a committee like this that could help guide the expenditure or the prioritization of a dedicated fund specifically for this. And I'm just looking at this session. We could get a whole bunch done very, very quickly. I mean, we've shown, whether it's a state system or county system, within three to six weeks, we can get a lot of improvements in the ground to affect communities very quickly. So this is a number that I know we can justify putting out very quickly. If we're looking at safety improvements and just operation improvements right away, but also looking at longer-term improvements, adding in protected bike lanes or sidewalks and like.
And as a follow-up to that, how many Safe Routes to School coordinators does DOT have?
We have one.
And that handles the entire state?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Sendri Kimokolale. Thank you. Thank you Director. How does this contemplate the... Oh, I don't know if this is other counties, but how does this contemplate the sidewalk issue with the county for, you know, that snippet in time easement sidewalks that are disintegrating across the island like Mollenu or William Henry Road in Kanyahai?
So from my perspective, a funding portion like this would allow us to address a whole bunch of issues across the board. When we hear issues, and we've been putting out our safety survey to the public for a little while now, about 80% of them come back are for county roads. And not because the counties are doing a bad job, it's just that they have more roads than us. I mean, they have three times the roads that the state does. So just understanding that when Chair Lee and I were talking, I mean, the needs are so big across the state and the counties, it'd be really good to have a piece of funding like this that we could address systems versus just state or county roads.
Okay, so you're saying that is a possibility?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because this, if you live on Waikoloa Road or on Mollenu, this is gonna ring hollow if we don't, if we put in a lane and then it doesn't address the potholes in the sidewalk. That's what we just haven't been able to work out today.
Chair. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Chair. Further questions? No, just real quick on this, we talked about this briefly, but similarly in the past, we've had the Safe Routes to Schools, like specific to schools, right? Special fund and kind of similar program where projects get proposed and evaluated and funded. If we were to fold that together into this, because it's sort of similar, or even use the special fund that exists for that and dump this money into there and just broaden the authorized uses in the special fund, is that...
I would support it. And the only thing I would caution is with the federal rules that come in for the Safe Routes to School funding that we get, there are strings attached to it. There's portions that we can use for programs, portions we can use for seed money, portions that we can use for infrastructure. That's all of it.
Would that necessarily limit if we put all this other separate money in without those strings?
No, no. So what I would do is make sure that we fund things with federal only in different areas, so that we wouldn't co-mingle the money or obtain any of the money with federalness.
But that wouldn't need any specific implications in the bill?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, like with CJ Johnson, if you're still on? You also had mentioned Safe Routes to Schools?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify the previous comment regarding the one asked about the Safe Routes Coordinator, and there's only a statutory Safe Routes Coordinator. I think many states have a best practice full-time Safe Routes Coordinator, whose job is to provide TA and interact and develop county plans and work with nonprofits. As I understand it, the coordinator at the HDOT is not a full-time Safe Routes Coordinator and is only the coordinator for statutory purposes.
All right. If we were to fold in the Safe Routes program... Oh, you still there? So if we were to fold in the Safe Routes program into this so that we have what's basically a bigger pot of funds that can address not only schools, but connectivity around schools and for everything else, do you see that as an issue?
I think that would be great. And I think, and the proposed language that we suggested for amending the existing Safe Routes to School, HRS addresses the need for a statewide coordinator. That's a dedicated full-time one that could support this work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, let's move on to the next measure. Thank you everybody. Up next is SB 1173 relating to vehicles, which prohibits a person intentionally discharging smoke or other emissions onto another person, and establishes penalties. And testifying first on 1173 is Hawaii Transportation Association. Is this?
Hello Chair Lee. I'm not sure if we can see or hear me.
Well, we see you behind a cloud of black soot. Here. I'm just joking. Is your video working?
I guess not. This is not...
Okay, well, why don't you go ahead and we'll figure out the IT issues.
Yeah, we can hear you.
My telephone system wasn't connecting, so I had to geriatric this thing.
No worries.
Okay, well, yeah, we oppose the bill. First, we can't imagine any commercial driver intentionally discharging sulfur smoke upon any personal vehicle with our vertical exhaust stacks, even if you wanted to aim at somebody. You couldn't with the vertical stacks. And enforcement is difficult. Anybody can claim that sulfur smoke was discharged at them, but how to prove it's intentional, we don't know. Lots of emission technologies have come along since 20 years ago, and a lot of the actual soot is trapped by these particular filters and burned off. So, but gases can still be eliminated, no matter how clean because of particulates out there. And the other scenario just popped into my mind a little earlier, was you might be key when you have lights turning and the buses start moving. The exhaust gas are emitted and they're emitted down towards the road, then whatever stuff is on the road, dust, sand, that's kicked out. So it's not something that is intentional. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on 1173 is Joel Rivera in opposition. That's all the written testimony we have. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Senator.
Yes, for the record, Todd Boulanger, Executive Director of Bike Share Hawaii. I'd like to testify in support of this. And I believe the intent of this bill is really focused on the, not the commercial vehicles as such, as testimony is previously given, but privately owned vehicles and what is typically called rolling coal. This is where additional emission defeat devices have been added, and it often impacts pedestrians and cyclists and other sidewalk users where when the vehicle purposely accelerates, the defeat device is engaged and a big, basically a big, it's almost like a locomotive going by. It's happened to me. It's happened to many of our members. And typically, you see it on higher-speed arterials, typically state roads like going out towards Kahala, maybe even Nimitz. A lot of drivers, it's almost a psychological tool to suppress other road users. It's, as they've tracked it on the continent. So this is an additional device. It's made to emit rolling smoke, and it's very hard to breathe. I don't know if you've been by a vehicle that's, emissions are faulty, especially when they're on purpose, especially a diesel vehicle. And it's very hard to breathe and it's poisonous. So I support this bill and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you everybody. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 1403 relating to motor carrier vehicle inspections, which allows the Director of Transportation to upgrade the motor carrier vehicle inspections, authorizing changes to the program to be implemented by admin rules. And testifying first on 1403 is Department of Transportation.
Thank you Chair. We dropped the bill, but we don't need it now. So I see for it to be deferred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
1403.
I'd rather have ours as well.
1403. Up next is Hawaii Transportation Association. Just Nakakita.
Vice Chair Noi and committee members. We got her with Director Sniffen's testimony.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony we have on SB 1403. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify?
Yes.
No, 1430?
Yes, 14.
No, not 1430. Ask her.
We're on Senate Bill 1403.
No, not 1430.
Are you looking to testify on another measure?
Safety chairs.
Okay, that's coming up. So hold on just a minute and we'll finish this measure and come back to you. Thank you. Anyone else on 1403? If not, any questions? If not, all right, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 493 relating to motor vehicle inspections, which provides that no new motor, no new vehicle needs a safety inspection until five years after the date it was sold, and moving to a two-year motor vehicle safety check for vehicles 10 years of age or newer, under certain circumstances. And testifying first on SB 493 is the Department of Transportation.
Chair, DOT stands in opposition.
Thank you. Up next we have testimony from three individuals who submitted written testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, Vice Chair.
With regards to the five-year, I guess, hold once you do an inspection, this is only on, well, this measure covers only new vehicles, my understanding. So what happens with, how do we know in between those times that there's an insurance covered for a certain vehicle? So what happens with, uh, how do we know in between those times that there's an insurance covered for a certain period?
This is a difficulty. And for for me, just looking at the numbers that we have, uh, for in any inspection period. Vehicles from two years on average about fifteen percent failure rate. So that inspection period just gives us that timeframe to look at correcting potential either um. Faulty equipment or modified equipment um in any vehicles. It also allows that check on on the required documentation for for those vehicles.
Oh, okay. But you know, we've had bills over the years. And I think there was a lot of support for extending it to two years. Um, which I think probably would would be a benefit, but. Uh, okay, it's just a question because in the event, um, but I know though, if there is a purchase of a vehicle. Then the the financial institution requires, I think if you have a loan, that an insurance will be covered, right? I think, um, but if someone pays cars with cash, um, you know, then. Uh, there's really no, um, I I would think, you know, if there's any coverages of oversight.
So I think there's really good reasons to look at consideration or considering extending the periods between inspections. But just based on the data that we have, very difficult for us to recommend that um there wouldn't be any issues or safety issues that would come up.
But that's interesting too for discussional purposes for five years. Are you aware any other state that has five years?
There's some states that don't even have.
Oh, that's right. That's true. There's many in the country.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So for whatever reason, I I can't see your testimony uh in the packet. Well, so if you can comment, you know, while we're asking the question.
Yeah.
The the five-year um portion of the bill, I understand. But then it also proposes the two-year for vehicles ten years of age or younger. What what's your specific issue with that?
In general, specific issue, we still get fifteen percent failure rate throughout the years. It's a difficulty. So, I mean, just from my perspective, not only do we have faulty equipment that come through. Um, I mean, there's a bill going through right now that that asks for to ensure that we're, that the lights are are set correctly in the vehicles. Um, there's too many things that I see just based on the data. It could be faulty in the in the equipment or modify um and the like. Right now, I just have big issues with extremely dark tint because. Because that's that doesn't look like it's being caught on an inspection piece. And we're talking to inspectors about that right now. But those are all the things that we see annually every year.
Bummer.
Thank you.
Any further?
Um, as a follow-up to some of the line of questioning, isn't it required by state law to have an insurance?
Yes.
Um, and then um follow-up to um Senator from Kanyoe. Um, would DOT be open? Um, I know in the bill it proposes five years. Um, would you be open to like three or four years rather than five years? I I understand your overall concern on VMT and funding and whatnot.
It it's just difficult. It'd be just based on the numbers. If we saw that there was a lower incidence of fault of of. Of failures on the inspections.
In the first five years?
Yeah, then I could see it.
What what would be that number though?
Well, I don't even see a reduction. I just see ar- on average, it's about fifteen percent throughout. So it's difficult for me to say what that breakpoint would be.
Sure, understood. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, further questions? All right. If not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to Senate Bill fourteen thirty relating to motor vehicles. Which repeals motor vehicle safety inspection requirements for certain motor vehicles. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Okay, DOT stands on in opposition for the same uses of DOT.
Thank you. Up next, we have uh Leeward Auto Repair in opposition. Hawaii Transportation Association.
Thank you, Chair. We uh, we have concerns about the bill. I mean, at some point, the older vehicles. Uh, will have problems developing, so. Um, what's like, we don't know what the age threshold should be. But uh, the the way stations can uh weigh in on that. And uh, language from within the bill. Requiring inspection as quote is in such unsafe condition. As a constituent minister of public was not expected required and cannot reasonably be restored to a safe condition. It's required this part. Those vehicles should be inspected. Uh, but if there's a blanket exemption, then I don't know how that's gonna be accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think I think that's his one. Um, well, we can come back, we can come back to any question and answer. Real quick, IT, can we just uh crank the volume up a little bit here for the online folks?
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you. Uh, up next is JB Entertainment Corporation in support. Lahu Motorsports Association in support. Uh, Spencer Barrows. Um, in support. Uh, we do have a number of, again, we have about three pages or so of individuals testifying, almost all in support. A handful in opposition, one with comments. Um, is anybody in the room here here to testify in this measure today? All right, in person. Okay, why don't we go through the room first and then we'll go to the folks online. So please, uh, come on up. Good afternoon. I think you could state your name and.
Yeah, my name's Ryan Nicholas Luther from the public. Uh, I just wanted to just show my strong support. Uh, with this bill worth repealing the safety inspections. Uh, I wrote a couple of notes down here, so just standing by my written testimony too as well. Yeah, I put that for you all. So for me, it's as a public, the traffic and police officers have a little bit more important deal than looking at a safety sticker. You can look at registrations. Uh, they can see the malfunction of a light or an actual blinker or whatnot. So when I go ahead and look at being driving in DOT, I see a lot more need for the commercial side and us not having way stations. I feel like this is a much greater need than looking at public vehicles. So I would, you know, advocate for for proper maintenance and care for these commercial vehicles, for safety checks to continue and implement with these. Uh, tires, trailers are falling apart. I mean, that's all I see when I'm driving on the highways, specifically even where they're driving on the highways and speeds. Um, you know, for a viable solution with these safety checks, I know it's money too as well that we'll be losing funds. Uh, for me, there's coming from the mainland decade ago, there was a fixing ticket. So an officer seeing a vehicle that was broken down and give them a ticket, you have a certain amount of time to go ahead and take care of that. And then once that was implemented and completed, you go ahead and send that in. You get it, you know, certified by someone or a cadet, he used to sign them off that it was fixed, like dark light, what I heard here, you know, uh. Tints, things like this sort. And then you, when that is go ahead in in that timeframe, there's no cost that's incurred. But if that isn't done and implemented in the amount of time allotted, whatever that is, you know, developed thirty days or whatnot. Then that gets implemented onto your registration. And when you go ahead and try to go ahead and get your registration done, you have to show proof of that fix being done. For me, it's just, you know, police officers and traffic officers have a lot more to do than looking at a tiny sticker. And a lot of them are are showing bid numbers as well. So you're pulling someone over for something that might just be a fake safety sticker. When you have registrations and registration are linked to your safety inspection anyways. So really, you're, you know, you're losing a lot of time and and money for officers pulling people over when they can just go ahead and give that safety ticket or a fixing ticket to someone. Seeing that issue and just go ahead and get it corrected. So I just want to say that I have a strong support of repealing safety inspections and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Next.
Again, for the record, Todd Boulanger, um, Bike Share Hawaii, I wish to have um verbal testimony in uh opposition of this. Um, cyclists really depend on motor vehicles to have well-adjusted headlights, which really the um. Current inspection system doesn't really um address, at least when I've had our motor vehicles inspected. I I'm old enough to remember when you had to go into an inspection station and have your headlights checked and. Um, I think the number of failures in the submitted testimony may be missing really the problems that. New vehicles have regarding um. Headlights that are too bright, poorly adjusted. Um, license plates that have a smoke, smoke covers. Um, and additionally for pedestrians and cyclists, we really need. A system that makes sure that motor vehicle drivers have uh insurance in case of a collision or crash. Um, we really really rely on the system. Um, i- if if this bill does go through to law, we would like to have some data as to the number of. People that might not have insurance, choose insurance if the inspection periods are much longer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, anyone else in the room wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? All right, if not, let's go online. Mr. Lyons, thank you for your patience.
Uh, thank you, Chair Lee. I appreciate your time. Um, very briefly, I'll try to talk fast, but I'm open for questions. First of all, I'm a retired police officer sergeant here in Honolulu. And I am in support of doing away with safety checks. I, in all the accidents I've been to, nobody has ever said, was this a safety issue? And we have thirty-four, over thirty-four states in the nation that do not require any kind of uh. Safety check or safety inspection. The other thing is, you know, when you go, I'll give you an example, from Kahalu to Pearl City. I only found one station to give a safety check for a motorcycle. If they have a mechanic available, but they haven't been able to keep a mechanic. Cause they they don't last. The other thing is, you look at Honolulu. Uh, motorsports, Hawaii motorsports. They only do two in the morning and two in the evening. The other thing, when you do a safety check, they check if the lights are working, but they don't check where they're pointing. So one could be pointing at the ground, one could be pointing at the stars. The main thing is the light is on. And so it becomes redundant. The other thing. I had the experience of having to take my vehicle all the way to Honolulu even like. Get a safety check. And it's ridiculous. It cost me a hundred dollars and a day's pay. And I lost money. And then they nearly doubled the cost of the inspection and I paid the, nothing was wrong. Everything was up to date and right. So this is an opportunity for a lot of problems.
It can change.
And, I'm sorry.
It can change.
Yeah, and if you have uh something wrong with your car, the next day. Things could go wrong. So there's no longevity in the inspection except only for that day.
If I asked you to summarize, please.
Um, please, support this bill and getting rid of it. It's it's redundant and it's troublesome. People have a hard time getting in to get a safety check. I'm tired of waiting in a line for four hours just to get a ten-minute safety check. But the computer requires they spend an hour on it. It's not happening.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you.
All right, are there others um online wishing to testify in this measure? If not, all right, thank you, everybody. Um, are there any questions?
DOT, please. Director, can you address the uh points made by the previous testifier about? I I'm unfamiliar with the waystation issue and why or whether, you know, how we deal with that. With that issue and then also the fix-it ticket approach.
So for, I was a little confused with the with the comments, but um.
I, from what I heard and then I, you know, if 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 we continue to be confused and I can ask a gentleman to come up and elaborate. But it seems to me like the allusion, there he was alluding toward the the fact that commercial vehicles are heavier and then. You know, cause more damage and on the continent, waystations, you know, address that issue.
So all of our, at the ports, we have waystations and we have inspections. It's it's required by federal law that we inspect um all of our our motor carriers uh out there. So our commercial motor carriers are inspected by the DOT. Um, not only at the ports, but at the locations throughout the islands as well. So we have uh rolling waystations in different areas to make sure we can enforce throughout.
Okay, and then the fix-it, the fix-it ticket approach versus ours.
I don't understand how that that's easier, because the for in our approach, we take care of those, we make sure that the the officers' jobs are easier. By ensuring that there's an inspection program that normalizes what a vehicle should look like. So when an officer sees that that safety check, they know that it went through a normalized process. To ensure that these of these standard sets of equipment are are not faulty.
Do you believe that?
Thank you, Chair.
The safety checks actually make sure the cars are not faulty. I just went in the other day, it was four minutes. All I did was my lights, check the tint, put the tires, put on the thing, and look the ball joints, nothing.
Yeah, so I believe it does, it does do a good job. I I mean, there's some, there's some of those operators that we gotta make sure that we talk to. So if we see situations like that, probably not the public can report to us so we can start re- reeducating those those operators.
It's not just one safety checks. This is how they operate, because they lose money. It's not worth their time.
See, I don't, we don't see that though. That's the thing. When we start working with our operators, that's not what we see by and large. But if there's areas that you see it, we'll we'll love to address it with them.
Other questions? All right, if not, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. That is the last measure on our agenda and we are. All about forty minutes ahead of schedule, so mahalo everybody for your efficiency. Um, so what we're gonna do is uh recess for decision-making. Recess. Good afternoon. We're reconvening the Committee on Transportation here in Senate Conference Room two-two-four. For decision-making on our three P M agenda. First is Senate Bill fourteen eleven relating to the drug and alcohol toxicology testing lab. Um, recommendation is gonna be to move this measure ahead with amendments. Uh, we'd like to adopt DOH's amendments, which removes them as the expenditure agency, uh, as the bill focuses on DOT instead. Any questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Chair's recommendation on SB fourteen eleven is to pass with amendments. Uh, Chair Lee?
Aye.
Your vice chair goes aye. Senator Alafonji?
Aye.
Senator Q Hoopaloli?
Aye.
And Senator Awal?
Excused. Was that in? Oh, there he is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one of the first ones, fourteen eleven, first one.
You want me?
Yep. Yes.
Uh, measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, we're good, we're good. Moving on to SB fourteen oh one relating to the Electric Bicycle and Electric Moped Rebate Program. I'll note that we just had a bill uh on our prior agenda two days ago that we also incorporated a necessary change into. So this bill becomes duplicative, so we're gonna defer it. Moving on to SB nine-two-nine uh relating to Department of Transportation. Um, didn't have a chance to talk with DOT about this, uh, but. Um, just wanted to defer it till two-seven, three P M so we have an opportunity to have a conversation. So it's uh two-seven at the end of our three P M agenda.
Oh, you must, you must state the room number.
Oh, yes, in, thank you, Conference Room two-two-four here at the State Capitol. Next is SB ten eighty-seven relating to transportation. Um, I'll just note for folks, um, SB ten eighty-seven and SB ten eighty-six largely deal with the same substantive. Uh, intent, so uh we're gonna defer SB ten eighty-seven. Moving on to SB ten eighty-six relating to transportation, um, this is the other one. Uh, so recommendation would be to pass this with amendments. Um, incorporating the uh members and responsibilities is outlined in SB ten eighty-seven. Um, however, do want to make a note that we'd like to uh acknowledge the existing Highway Safety Council Working Group and membership. Uh, make sure we have some continuity there and retain those folks in their respective slots. Um, so uh we'll make those amendments to the measure. Any comments or questions on that? Oh, and we'll adjust the preamble accordingly. Questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair.
Okay, with five members present, Chair's recommendation on SB ten eighty-six is to pass with amendments. Five members present, all those in favor, uh, all those voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Moving on to SB fourteen-ten relating to truck beds. Recommendation is to move this ahead with amendments. Uh, we'd like to add in um a defective date to this measure as it goes forward.
Okay, what, you what said?
Uh, SB fourteen-ten. Uh, any questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair.
With amendment two?
Yes.
Okay, with five members present, any voting, uh, with reservations on SB fourteen-ten, any no votes?
No.
Okay. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to SB, uh, fifteen oh six relating to transportation. Uh, we'd like to move this on with amendments as well. Uh, so we'd like to add members to the working group, uh, from each county transportation department. Uh, also adopting, uh, and at the same time, there'll no longer be a need for the, uh, Metropolitan Planning Organization members, so we'll remove them as that would be duplicative. And then also, um, per the Council on Development to Disabilities, um, recommendations, we'd like to add somebody representing, uh, in that constituency. And then, um, for the, uh, HCAN testimony, um, also add in someone speaking to the needs of young children. And then, uh, as we had discussed in testimony, we'd like to fold in the Safe Routes to Schools, um, program. So we have one unified, very simple, uh, funding stream for these projects. Uh, make the associated changes necessary to make that functional. Um, also, um, use that special fund. So we'll remove the establishment of a new special fund and modify the existing Safe Route Special Fund. Finally, we'll remove part two of the bill, which deals with the long-term funding, permanent funding switches. So this will be a, uh, a singular infusion of funding and per DOT's testimony, add in, uh, uh, amount of fifty million dollars. Um, and then we'll adjust the preamble accordingly. Any questions or comments on this? If not, Vice Chair.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on SB fifteen oh six is to pass with amendments. With five members present, anyone voting with reservations, any no votes? Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB eleven seventy-three relating to vehicles. Want to just pass this as is. Any questions and comments? Not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB eleven seventy-three, uh, pass unamended. Any voting with reservations, any no votes? Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, moving into SB fourteen oh three relating to motor carrier vehicle inspections, uh, as this bill appears to be no longer needed, we'd to defer this measure. And then for, um, Senate Bills four ninety-three and fourteen thirty with, which both deal with, uh, motor vehicle safety inspections. Most of all, want to, uh, mahalo the introducers of the measure for bringing this issue forward as it's, um, quite timely. Um, so, uh, it sounds like there's a lot of conflicting issues here. So what I do is, um, for SB four ninety-three, I want to defer this till, uh, two-seven. Or at the end of our three PM agenda, um, to see if there's some sort of middle ground here, uh, particularly with the new vehicles and, um, so forth. Going forward. Uh, so that will be coming back, uh, two-seven, three PM here in Conference Room two-two-four. And SB fourteen thirty, um, as it deals with full repeal. Again, want to mahalo the introducer for, um, starting this. You know, two years ago, I just want to say we, um, repealed the vehicle, uh, reconstruction requirements and those inspections. And part of that discussion was that, that was okay because we still had safety inspections to begin with. So, um, didn't want to go so far as to repeal everything completely, but did want to have that conversation. Um, and we're gonna have the other bill to, uh, sort of see what we can figure out. And if folks want to hop in, we'd love to, um, chat with DOT about what to do going forward. So we'll defer that bill, uh, for now. So, any questions or comments on the rest of this? If not, all right, that is the end of our agenda. Mahalo, everybody. Return.